Executive session, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, all in favor? Aye. Would you certify executive session for the February 2nd, 2022?
Yes, ma'am. We went in for 2.2-3711A1 personnel and 2.2-3711A8. And, Ms. Chairman, I move to certify that to the best of our knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the ultimate meeting requirements, and only such public business matters were heard identified in motion into executive session were heard discussed and considered.
Okay, Mr. Zakuwija?
Yes.
Mr. Baustick? Mr. Bobo?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
And Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We'll stand for the pledge, Mr. Zakuwija, would you lead this one back, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the peaceful, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence, please. Okay. Thank you. Dr. Brown, do we have delegations on the agenda for this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one individual that has spoken, of course, or contacted us to speak. And, of course, we have for anyone else that'd like to speak tonight, and that is Ms. Bobo. Bobo, I'd be yours.
Ms. Bobo, we state the name of where you're from, and we try to limit these four three minutes, and that gives you ample time.
Delanda Bobo, from Lebanon, Virginia, here today. The Worker 222022, he reveals deep and secret things, he knows what is in the darkness, and might dwell with him, Daniel 222. Recently, I attended a conference that included qualified expert presentations in immunology, virology, cardiology, and whatnot. Many sounded the alarm about the COVID-19 injection harming children. One expert cried as he shared that two children every hour will die from this shot. These compassionate, brilliant people have nothing to gain and much to lose, or are learning people to the truth. Experts know the contents of this injection can cause permanent damage in children's critical organs. And once these damages occur, they are irreparable, because genetically reset immune system is irreversible. This is why over 60,000 doctors and medical scientists have declared that the Great Verentun Declaration that healthy children should not be inoculated for COVID-19, because doing so is more dangerous to the children than the virus itself. So why would it become part of the agenda, some states mandating the shot to attend school, when there was never really any risk to healthy children to begin with? Well, consider this, if this shot makes it onto the children's vaccination schedule, they cannot be held liable for injuries or death to any and all persons. So I am here today for the children. The question at hand is not whether parents should make choices regarding the children, they should, that is their right and their responsibility. The real question is are busy parents being given all of the relevant facts they deserve and the necessary information to make informed decisions before their child is injected? An irreversible decision would potentially see serious consequences according to qualified mRNA experts. Are parents signing consent forms if they knew adverse side effects could include heart disease and even death? Are parents being shown the hard evidence on the vaccine adverse event recording system where child deaths from this shot are recorded as young as age five? Would parents decide differently if they were aware that the contents of this shot could genetically alter a child's God-given DNA? The context of the current study at Harvard and MIT. Do they know the significant increase of high school athletes' deaths during sporting events from heart-related issues? So the question for the school board members whose responsibility includes the safety and protection of our children, do parents trust that the shot is safe, completely safe, for their children, perception influence just because it is being made available on school property? I hope you never have to say to parents, "I'm sorry, we trusted them." A sense of urgency and necessity is being projected, rather than encouraging a visit with their own medical professionals. What you do about this and other current prevailing issues that affect the children is either right or it is wrong. In three of the four gospels, whosoever offends one of these little ones, it is better for him than a millstone to hang about his door and toss him to the sea. If there is any possibility that the children are at risk, one cannot compromise, no matter the threat of loss of minds. The mind is the enemy's playground, and fear is his sharpest tool, final point. This is an urgent call to action, never in my 30-year career, including paying out life insurance claims, have I seen what I am witnessing right now. There is a 40% chance that increase in death, and it is not from direct COVID. Silence Truth is finally surfacing in your packet, I've given you some resources, which is not easy to Google and Wikipedia to find truth. And I'm sharing a book also that you can share and do whatever, throw it in the trash, whatever you want. Silence Truth can be heard in the recent Senator Ron Johnson panel testimony, link in your packet. Tom Rentsch is now citing Nuremberg Code violations, experimenting on humans as a crime against humanity. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your listening. And they have the names, we have the packages for us, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else like to speak to the board?
Okay, Dr. Brown, we've got adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, we did make one adjustment in reference to the pilot program for our students for Castlewood Elementary School. We've had a request from the Elgin Group to consider that same program for Bible release, and we have done that for the last three years at Belfast. And they are wanting to expand the program, and they're asking for the board's consideration to allow a pilot program for Castlewood Elementary School.
Okay.
We'll add that as an action item for the board's consideration when we get to that.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Okay, do we have a motion that we finalize our agenda for this evening?
I'll make that motion that a chair to finalize the agenda is just amended.
Thank you, Mr. Zakuwija, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a motion, that we approve our amendments on the January 6th meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Baustick, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, all in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Brown, we have recognitions for this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, I ask Assistant Superintendent Mr. Fletcher to come forward and join us and lead us through these recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, Madam Chair, members of the board, we do have a, it is a pleasure to bring to you tonight some recognitions. First of all, I'd like to invite Peter Kaiser, her family, and the administrators from her school to come forward with.
Ms. Kaiser has been decorating our Russell County website, when you bring it up, for recent weeks, and I'm proud of her. Thank you.
Ms. Kaiser is a teacher at Castlewood Elementary School, and she has been selected as one of four, I think, Teachers of the Year by Code VA. Now, Code VA is a nonprofit group that partners with schools, parents, and communities to bring equitable computer science education to all of Virginia's students. Every year, Code VA recognizes an outstanding computer science educator from the state of Virginia during Computer Science Education Week. The criteria for this selection: equitable access and inclusive inclusivity, evidence of innovative implementation, impact beyond the classroom, computer science knowledge and professional development, and advocacy for computer science education. As you know, we had some snow at our January release, so some of our recognitions weren't able to come, so we've invited our December employees of the month to be recognized tonight. That is Pam Hart from Honaker Elementary School, Teacher of the Month, and Elizabeth Perkins, Lebanon Elementary Support Employee of the Month. I'd like to ask those people and their administrators to come forward.
I think Ms. Hart had another conflict with our meeting day, that we are very proud of Ms. Hart for what she does there at Honaker Elementary School. She's a great asset to that organization.
I'd like to read some of the nominations from Ms. Hart, if you would allow me to. I have several students in particular that nominated her, and I'll read some of them to you. Ms. Hart is always willing to help, she's quick to respond to any situation. There was an incident that happened in our lunch period, Ms. Hart was very heroic during the incident and saved a kid from choking. She's always helping us and encouraging us to do better. That is why I feel Ms. Hart should be the Teacher of the Month. Ms. Hart performed a Heimlich maneuver to help save a student that was choked at lunch, for this we are very grateful. And then there are several other students that echo that same thing, so we'll look at Ms. Hart and her quick thinking and using that skill to show the body. So we will send her certificate to Mr. Holmes, and he will make a presentation at the school. Next, we have Elizabeth Perkins, the Secretary of Lebanon Elementary School, a couple of nominations for her. Elizabeth is the multitask queen, she's always there to handle whatever is needed by a student, teacher, or parent. Elizabeth can answer the phone, take a message, buy a purchase order, take a temperature, all at the same time. She knows all the students, where they live, and any allergies they may have. She protects the faculty and students every day by being our first line of defense. We love Elizabeth and appreciates everything she does for our school. And then the third one is she keeps the office running smoothly amid the pandemic. And our January Teacher of the Month, both come from Castlewood High School, that's, I think, the first time since we've been doing this that both have come from the same school. Greg Vance, Support Employee of the Month, and Patrick Wade, Teacher of the Month. I'd like to ask them to come forward, Mr. Sparks. First of all, Greg Vance, Greg Vance is a hard worker and is the glue that holds our classroom together. Not only does he drive a bus, but he is of aid in the TMD program. Greg always comes to school with a smiling face and brings joy and happiness to our students. He cares about his job and doesn't ask for anything in return. I think he deserves to be recognized for what he does for this school. Please consider Greg Vance for this award. And the Teacher of the Month is Coach Wade. I humbly nominate Coach Patrick Wade for Russell County Public Schools Teacher of the Month. Though he is new to the building, he is not new to the profession. With nearly 16 years of experience invested in teaching and coaching, he has already built incredible rapport with a large number of our students at Castlewood High School. He's beloved by the special education students on his caseload, as well as the ones he works with in various classes. I have witnessed firsthand Patrick's ability to pull something from a student who wants to do nothing and give him or her the confidence to continue to try. Coach Wade's excellence in service to our students transcends academics, as he is our new basketball coach. His players have adapted exceptionally well to his coaching philosophy and style, and there's a great deal of optimism surrounding the team as we head into winter sports. He's an asset to our community, and most importantly, to the students it serves. Coach Patrick Wade has already established himself as a blue devil, and we are certainly lucky to have him.
Madam Chair, we also have some recognitions for our clerk, Ms. Gilbert, and also for the board members tonight. So we'll start with Ms. Gilbert, Ms. Gilbert, if you will. This is School Board Appreciation Month, as far as clerks are concerned, we have our appreciation certificate from the VSP. And also for our board members, we have our annual information dealing with School Board Appreciation Month as well. If board members would like to come down or stand up, either one, Madam Chair, which would you prefer?
We might as well just stand up here.
All right. Mr. Baustick? Mr. Baustick? We'll get photographed as well. Madam Chair? Ms. Garrett? Mr. Gibson? Mr. Parsons? Mr. Zakuwija? We'll get a photograph from Mr. Fletcher. All right, and thank the board for what they do, I know it's a tough job, and I appreciate you, and I know that our students, teachers, staff appreciate everything the board does as well. Madam Chair, that takes care of our recognitions.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Has board members had an opportunity to look at the bills and the accounts, have a motion that we pay the bills? Thank you, Mr. Baustick, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Brown, resignations and retirements?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a small list for the board's consideration tonight.
Okay, do we have a motion that we approve resignations and retirements this evening?
I'm making a motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Brown, prequel of personnel, youth personnel and transfers.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have some paraprofessionals and some coaches on tonight's agenda for the board's consideration and approval.
Okay, all in favor? Do I need a motion?
No motion, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Baustick, do we have a second, Mr. Gibson, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dr. Brown, the calendar?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two items tonight now in the action item, first is our calendar for FY23. Again, Dr. Addison has been working on this for us, that's one of his annual assignments, and he has reached out to our schools and polled our principals for information and recommendations from their staff. What we have before you is a very similar, excuse me, budget, excuse me, calendar to what we currently have for FY22. The one change that I would point out to the board, one of the things that we heard periodically in those discussions from recommendations from our staff was consideration for that first day back from Christmas break, being a professional development day, work day for our staff, and that's to be a non-student day. So we have incorporated that into this FY23 budget, excuse me, FY23 calendar, budget on the brain. With that being said, Madam Chair, that's the only change of any significance from our current calendar that we are in right now with FY22.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Brown, do we have a motion that we approve the 2022-2023 calendar? Thank you, Mr. Baustick.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Zakuwija, all in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Brown?
We have a second action item, Madam Chair, we had it at the beginning of our meeting, and that was dealing with the Elgin Group's request for the Bible release. I will share again, it's a pilot program, Ms. Banner is open to that for the students select grade level for Castlewood Elementary School. That again is purely a student option, there's approval forms that will have to be signed consent forms from parents. But we have operated this program the last three years with Belfast Elementary School, and the request was to extend this to other branches of our county, and they have requested the consideration for the Castlewood branch this year.
Okay.
I'm going to motion to approve this program.
No, thank you, Mr. Gibson, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, all in favor? And I would like to thank Ms. Banner for being with us this evening. You've had some trying times recently, and we're sorry for your loss from your dad. And thank you for working with the Elgin Group with this pilot program, and we support you in that. Go ahead, Dr. Brown.
We have an information item, Madam Chair, and that's our reopening plan coronavirus update. Again, our numbers and so forth in southwest Virginia are peaking now, hopefully we're on the downhill side of this latest surge. We have met with the Health Department as early as this, or as recently as this morning, and with that, they did, again, validate that point. Virginia as a whole is improving, southwest Virginia is a week or such behind as far as the trend line is concerned. So we hope to see decreases coming with the report card we get from valid. We did have more discharges today in contrast to admissions in regards to COVID-related illness in the valid chain, so that was encouraging. So with that being said, Chair, Madam Chair, our numbers, currently we have 14 staff members that are COVID-positive that are active, 16 staff members that are being quarantined because of exposure, students, we have 101 that are actively positive for COVID, and 261 that are actively quarantined at the moment.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, for that update. Does the board have any discussion at this point?
Yes. Effective immediately, I want to make a motion that we take the, let everyone, every one of our school employees have the right to wear or not wear their mask at their discretion, we hope you will, but we won't make you fire, that everyone gets to make their own choice.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Does the board need to have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Yes, in accordance with COVID issues, I'd again make a motion that effective immediately, the Russell County Schools no longer conduct contact tracing for positive COVID-19 cases. Therefore, we will no longer identify post contacts to be sent home for quarantine, and we'll no longer be quarantining healthy individuals. Obviously, if any staff or child or student is feeling sick or has COVID symptoms, we highly recommend that you stay home and quarantine for positive 19 individuals, that will not change. May I ask clarification, Madam Chair? With that being said, could I frame that, Mr. Gibson, in that our practices for COVID-positive will not change? Our practices for COVID-exposed asymptomatic students will be that that's parent option, they don't have to quarantine, we won't do contact tracing. Is that fair?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, do you get it? We got it, the corporate, so, okay.
I'll second that one.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Brown, our sales tax is $439,786.54, our AVM is $32.54. We have our maintenance and expenditure report, do we have any question on either of those? Future agenda items?
One thing I'd like to ask you, Dr. Brown, I'm curious, with all these things that we've got coming up, days that we're having to defend, give us a little. Let me just send us a sheet, and I said that.
Sure. We can do a calendar for the next month.
More of them all night we took with.
The board is going to be very busy this month, or over the next three, four weeks, so that's no problem, sir, we can do that.
I'll give you a little day or two ahead of time call to try to remind everybody, as well. You're going to have us see, that is February the 16th, Dr. Brown, for our budget?
Yes, Madam Chair, on the 16th, we'll have a budget workshop for the board members, that, of course, is open to the public. In addition to that, the board will have a workshop that will be a closed event dealing with the discussion for the superintendent search. Both those will be on the 16th for the board's convenience, and then on the, I guess, the 23rd, or so forth.
And our regular board meeting will be scheduled for March the 3rd, on Thursday, at 8:00. We'd like to recognize Honaker High School this evening, and I personally would like to thank Lisa McGoughlin, and I'm sure she probably was the main chef for this evening. And if she ever wants to set up a bakery, making that orange cake, I think she probably. has. That is probably one of the best cakes I've ever, ever tasted, so. She's a great lady, and Honecker High School's lucky to have her there, so we'd like to thank them. Also, if you want to tune into WJHL TV, Tina Shortridge, or Tiny Shortridge, Tiny Shortridge, she is hometown hero. She was selected from WJHL. I think someone there at the school maybe has submitted Ms. Shortridge, and she's a great individual, too, so.
Yeah, that came out at 7 o'clock, I believe it's available now on the website as well, and most likely mentioned tonight at the 11 o'clock news.
Make sure you see that. Does any other board member have anything that you can think of, you want to discuss or relay? Okay. We will take a motion. I'm glad to have you for that, Mr. Postick. We missed you last time.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Yes, you were. I'm sorry for that, too. Okay, all in favor, we adjourn?
Aye.